I have a. What do I just do with my? It's under your finger. Okay, moving on, we call the meeting to order if we have public comment. Seeing no individuals available for public comment, we'll move on to the meeting minutes of November 17th. We look for a motion to accept the meeting minutes for November 17th, 2025.
I would move to approve the meeting minutes of November 17th, 2025.
A motion made to approve, we have seconds.
I was, I'll second it, but I was not here for the meeting.
Okay, I'll second it then and indicate, are there any questions or concerns noted in the minutes that you would like to have a conversation about? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those abstaining?
I'm abstaining, I was absent.
Okay, November 19th, meeting minutes for November 19th, we have those, and those have been forwarded to you for your review. We have a motion?
I move to approve.
We have a motion made to approve the meeting minutes of November 19th, we have a second?
That'll be you.
Yep.
There, how, second?
I was absent.
I'll second that motion to accept those meeting minutes. Do we have any changes or concerns or by the board or anyone else? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
One abstention.
One abstention, beautiful, okay. Moving on to the town administrator report, and I believe she's provided that in writing for us.
Excuse me.
And. Melanie, would you like to go through any specific areas on those?
So I did the contracts for the paving bids and sent those to Tim. He's gonna meet, we're just gonna go over and make sure that those are all good, then we'll get them sent out to get signed. I got the contract from RJ McDonald back today, actually, for the heating fuel. Um. Let's see, cultural council grant was signed, DocuSign completed the quarter two reporting for the High Plains Heart Grant. Um, not much for public records, just that one tiny fuel bid request that I sent out.
Which is very typical.
Yeah, so it was nice only having that little one. My, my update's getting shorter and shorter, it's kind of nice. Um, so at the meetings, I met at the senior center, Senator Durant with Kim Monch, Senator.
Moncho.
And Donna Farmer for Representative Forth, and he wasn't there. James had come as well, and there were a couple of senior center people who sat around the meeting. And it was a good conversation, you know, tell them about like our ambulance and just a bunch of other issues that the town's facing, it was, it was nice. Maureen and I met with the Hardwick Town Administrator and the Select Board Chair regarding the ambulance service. Council on Aging Agreement, and we're going to meet again in December, well, this month. The Council on Aging had its 21st anniversary, I went to that party, wasn't there too long, but that was fine, very festive. Eddie Joe did a good job putting that on. I took a tour of the sewer treatment plant, that was actually, it's nice and quiet down there, I actually kind of like it. Tom gave me a very good, a very good tour. We had a department head meeting, which was almost two hours, it was a really good meeting, a lot of discussion with a lot of things going on within all the departments. I think that they're very helpful for everybody to get everything together. Insurance Advisory Committee meeting to go over the retiree increases. I had a meeting with VEDAR for the next steps for moving to their accounting module. Another dispatch board meeting. And a bunch of other. A bunch of other meetings, I have to say. And then the stuff that is in our packet today, working on the draft changes for the portion of the fringe benefits. The personnel policy, draft surplus disposal policy, draft employee evaluation, draft special town meeting warrant. Yeah, there's just been a lot going on.
Anyone have questions? Concerns relative to the report?
Nope.
Okay, hearing on, moving on to the Select Board. Did you have the opportunity, Melanie, to talk with James about our meeting with Hardwick?
I think so.
A little bit, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Say that was a while ago, I think so, yes.
It was after our.
I mean, they are coming up with the amount of money that they owe us at this, you know, for this amount of time, and then it appears that based, you know, other than some mutual aid necessities, we will no longer be servicing them, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank the South Berry Common Committee and the Christerson Berry Committee and everybody who's done all the festive decorating to make our town look so nice and enjoyable for all the children who ride through town. It's very important to recognize those people that volunteer and.
And they, and they have been certainly working very hard. Some people working hard, putting up angels today.
Yeah.
I did indeed. No, I, I agree with you in certainly, certainly, I know the big day is Saturday, I hope you have good weather.
I know.
Is there a print?
Is there?
Yes.
Oh, because.
Nobody need to stop you?
No.
Losers like to walk in first.
It was cold last year. What time is that?
Between 12 and 12:15, those stats.
Right.
Okay, Richard, looks like you and I are up and this guy's not.
Oh, come on, man.
Okay. I do too. I think he should be Santa. Okay, you want to go with the ice skating, Richard?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the board again for approval, as we've done in the previous years with the 250th Committee. Now it's myself and volunteers that have, that have helped me over the last four years to set up the ice skating rink, so I'd like permission to put that back on. And Dr. Marshall suggested we use South Common because of the seating that Rich Glidden did in front of the bandstand, which we can put it back over there, that's fine.
Well, I, I know you're not pleased with that, but I, I just feel that because we put, you know, an amount of money and time and effort into trying to reseating it because the placement of the, that last year really sort of, I mean, we don't take really great care of the, you know, vegetation on the commons. And having made a real effort, I'd hate to just put the rink back there. I understand that the other area isn't the best because it has other issues. And I don't know if you can talk with the way they plow that area, not to bank it there, the bank the snow, the way they've been doing it.
See, everything goes away from the bank to Common, to the South Common.
Yeah.
They push it all over there, but we'll, we'll work with the DPW, see what we can do.
Where we had it the first year?
Yeah.
With the new one?
Yeah, the three years, and then last year we moved it in front of the bandstand. But we just did spend.
Two years in front of the bandstand, right?
No, just one.
Just one?
I think just one.
Yeah.
Was it?
But we spent that money to have the greenery fixed in front of the bandstand, so we don't want to kill it necessarily. So we'll just put it on South Common, it gets a lot of high traffic anyway.
Thank you for that.
So you want to vote on that, or you're good?
Yeah, no, I, I would, I would say, do, or somebody like could make a motion to approve the ice skating rink for the South, South Common?
I make a motion that we approve the setting up of the ice skating rink on South Common.
On South Common, aye.
We have a motion made and seconded to set up the ice skating rink on South Common, probably as soon as practicable and hopeful for the kind of weather that's necessary to make it as useful as it was last year. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, looks like a vote. New business, the disposal of surplus property policy, possible vote. Melanie, do you have some discussion with us on that?
So, yeah, so I just wrote up a draft policy that's pretty self-explanatory, just so that we can keep track of what departments are getting rid of, how they're getting rid of it, if we got any money, if we didn't get any money, just so we can keep track of town property.
Having read it, it's pretty, pretty much just, you know, following master in the law.
Yep.
Under 30B.
Yep.
We have.
Make a motion, we accept the disposal of surplus property policy.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the disposal of surplus property policy as presented and, you know, put together by our town administrator. Do we have any questions? Concerns? Hearing none? We have a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Looks like a vote. Okay, a draft of employee performance evaluation form, possible vote. This is pretty straightforward, I didn't, did you have an opportunity to chat with any employees or have any input from employees at this point?
I just put it together and that was it.
Okay.
If there's any changes that you guys think should be made, we can make them. And this is actually a PDF too that we'll type right into as well.
Good. We have to handwrite them all, close to 30, 30 something of them at a time, so it's nice. You know, all equals a hundred, I see, total, I mean, the highest score would be a hundred.
No, and I think, like, as far as departments, when they're evaluating their, the employees in their department, kind of, there's a, you know, a place for writing other things. For writing other comments at the end, and if they find anything as we go through it that they want to change on the form, we can change it for next year, you know?
I think I would, I would recommend that we put this policy for just review by, until our next meeting. And should, should employees find some concerns, what they would like to discuss with the town administrator, they might do so. And subsequent to that short period of time, because our next meeting would be this.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, the 15th of December, then we would move to approve the policy with any changes that the town administrator might consider at that point in time, after having the opportunity to hear any employee concerns.
So do you want me to send it to all employees?
Yes, anyone who would be evaluated with it.
Okay, so I'll send it to department heads and have them share it with their employees in their department, okay. And it's, it's just an evaluation, it's not a policy?
Right.
Right? Okay.
Make a motion, we table the employee performance evaluation till December 15th meeting?
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to table the performance evaluation format until their next meeting on December 15th, at which time the board will act on that, take action on this particular evaluation form. Those in favor?
Aye.
Location of fire department trailers, possible vote. I imagine you're here for that, chief?
Yes. I was talking to a few of you, seeing that we have such a problem with space at the fire department. Right now, we're keeping, we have three trailers, an ATV trailer, a hazmat trailer, and a trench rescue trailer, and they're all at, well, we moved the ATV trailer back down to Barry Plains. During the day, it's kind of far to go grab it in response, especially with now we have the pickup truck up here. I was just wondering if maybe we could put it in this, one of these lots, that just makes it quicker and easier for us to respond with.
We had one up here a while.
Yeah, a long time, yeah.
That white trailer.
Long time.
Seems like a good plan to me. I mean, to say you're short of space is sort of a euphemism for it's awful, but anyway. I have no problem with that. We have plenty of room, and I think the vandalism is pretty nil in this area.
Yeah, hopefully, that's another reason I want to move them up, it's just, it's kind of a dark place down there.
So, so you're thinking of the one that's most beslit, the one down here? Or the one of whatever?
Probably down there, that's where the other one was, it seemed other way. But I'll talk, I don't know who's plowing up here, but see what they want, like, if it's a certain spot, if they want us to put it all the way to the side or in the middle, I'll, I'll talk with the DPW on that.
It's a reasonable request.
We have a motion for that?
We have a motion?
I move to approve the location request by the, of the fire chief for trailers and what on excess equipment.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to authorize the fire chief to utilize the Henrywood's parking areas as necessary for the trailers that he needs to store here. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, your discussion with the compensation from Hardwick ambulance service for the first part of FY '26.
Oh, James, you might want to stick around for this one.
The discussion of the compensation from Hardwick for the ambulance service for the first part of FY '26. Due to our lack of sufficient ambulances for our own community, it is obvious to us that it would be impractical for us to consider that we're going to be able to, you know, provide services for the town of Hardwick. They are, they are aware of this situation and seem fine with the fact that they will be working more closely and utilizing Westbrook Field Ambulance Services. They understand that they owe us an amount of money that would be prorated, they supply some contract amount that we will be discussing with them for the time that we have been providing them with services, which would be from July 1st until, quite frankly, I don't know if it's tonight's vote or was just our conversation date, which was, I believe, November 8th.
I don't recall the date, I don't recall the date.
Okay, anyway, they will be coming up with a, a number, and they will be remitting that to us.
Well, I think they want our input on it as well.
Yeah.
So I don't know what your thoughts are on that for ambulance runs that we already did to Hardwick.
I can get you all those runs and everything, and figure that out.
Okay.
I would think it would be proportional to what the contract.
The time, I think you would.
Yeah.
Divide it by.
Yeah. Because it's.
I agree, it would be prorated.
It's a little over, it's a little more than the first quarter, so whether we do a day rate or whatever. Because we would be saying we're, we're done with that, was the effective date maybe with our conversation.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think they just wanted some number from us to give to them.
They seem, they seem pretty much of a mind that they understand they have serious issues with, you know, providing ambulance service over time, as does many of the towns, including us, as we struggle to get the ambulances we need to do the service for our own community. So, at any rate, we had, I thought, a relatively pleasant meeting. And, you know, no hard feelings, but. So at any rate, I guess we'll come up with a number?
Yeah, okay.
I'll work with them.
All right, thank you.
Okay, off the train.
Great, thanks so much. Okay, annual license renewals, we have alcohol license renewals. We have the alcohol license renewals as, as provided by our administrative assistant for the Barry Sportsman's Club, Quabin Plaza Liquors, Wholesome Farmers Market, Cafe on the Common, Red Tomato Pizza, Rowena's Resort Bar and Restaurant LLC, and Barry General Store, looking for an alcohol license renewal. Could we have a motion on those individual requests?
I would move to approve the alcohol license renewal as presented by the chairman chair.
I'll second that.
A motion made and seconded, the alcohol license renewals are simply that, renewals, these are agencies and organizations that have been in, in business within our community for numbers of years. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a number of common vitueller licenses renewals that are presented to us this evening. Barry Sportsman Club, Quabin Plaza Liquors, Wholesome Farmers Market, Cafe on the Common, Red Tomato Pizza, Rowena's Resort Bar and Restaurant LLC, and the Barry General Store. We need approval for those individual agencies seeking renewal of their common vitueller's license.
I move that we approve the following list of common vitueller license renewals.
Second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve those common vitueller's license read previously into the record, those in favor?
Aye.
We have three individual companies, or shall we say agencies, seeking entertainment license. That would be Cafe on the Common, Red Tomato Pizza, Rowena's Resort Bar and Restaurant LLC are seeking renewals.
I move to approve the entertainment license, if you can, if you want.
Second.
A motion made and seconded to approve the entertainment license renewals as presented by the chair. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, wage authorizations, we have personnel, we have a wage authorization for Garrett Skinner, the Veterans Service Officer. It's an unbenefited stipend position, a prorated $5,838, a stipend bi-weekly of $223.86. We, Mr. Garrett was available to us at our last meeting, and we think he has great background and has very, very strong credentials for this position. We're very lucky to welcome him to this very, very low stipended job. Do we have any other comments before we take a vote?
I think we're lucky to have him.
We're lucky to have him. We need, we need a motion to accept the wage authorization as presented?
I move to approve the wage authorization, federal services, Garrett Skinner.
We have a motion made and, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the wage authorization for Garrett Skinner, an unbenefited stipend position, a prorated amount, $5,838. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Notice of resignation, the assessor clerk, Paula Barkus, has indicated her notice of resignation for the assessor clerk position.
I move that we accept the resignation with regret from Paula Barkus, and thank her for her years of service to the assessors.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to accept the resignation of the assessor's clerk, Paula Barkus. Those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion with Planning Board and Conservation Commission of Mary Ann Gendren's being rehired after her December 31 retirement. Her retirement date is December 31, 2025. If she is seeking to do work after her retirement is made formal, there are specific guidelines by the, you know, you understand that, right?
Yep.
I'm supposed to stay, I'm separated for two weeks, so then I can come back.
Well, you, you can come back, but you can only make a certain amount of money, you cannot garner benefits. I mean, you can't like go on the health insurance and that sort of stuff. No, I know that, but I'm just saying, make sure that when this, you are rehired, that you follow very specifically the amount of money you can make and do not exceed that. If you do, the retirement people get really upset, and, and, and it just becomes difficult. So I only say to you, please understand you're not rehired, you're as a typical employee. You are bound by very specific restrictions by the, by your retirement, okay? You understand that, right? You're just nodding.
I mean, I've talked to them, they told me about the two weeks, I asked them what happens if I accidentally go over the amount made.
You're paying it back.
They said you'd be paying it back, so to me, that's pretty simple.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like 960 hours a year, or the difference from the current positions pay on your retirement. And then after one year, you can add additional $15,000 onto that figure. Because I worked for another municipality since I retired, so I'm very familiar with that. But they will go dollar for dollar, so if you don't watch it.
That's what she told me.
They'll take dollar for dollar.
I wasn't sure what the penalty was, so I asked her, she said you'd have to pay it back, I'm like, well, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, but I mean, they're not nice, but they're just not nice about it, I'll just say that.
Okay.
Okay?
Can I just point out one thing? So if you do come back, which is why I wanted this discussion, it can't, I don't see how it can be 20 hours a week, because that's a benefited position. It would have to be 19.5 hours a week as unbenefited, in my eyes, I don't know if Barry does things differently, but in reading the personnel policy, 20 hours is benefited, so we would have to give her benefits.
I didn't realize that there was any opportunity to have a benefited position under the same retirement system.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
So.
So it would have to be under 20 hours. Yeah, it would have to be under 20 hours, like 19.5 hours for it to not be benefited.
Yeah.
And I was just asking, can I have my same rate of pay that I'm making now to continue on? Like, I definitely don't want to start from the beginning.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I just, just understand that you can, you just have to stay within the parameters.
That's fine.
Of the retirement board.
So is that acceptable, or?
Well, under, yeah, well, understand, you can have the same salary you have now, but anytime that there's an additional addition to the salary, you know, you have restrictions of how much you can make, year after year.
Right.
Okay.
I know the first year is much less, and as Mr. Stevens said, next year is 15,000 more. But I don't even know if I really want to work.
Is she eligible for COA?
I'm sorry?
Is her employees eligible when they retire at a certain level for something called COA?
Cost of living, again, that is, that is something that's managed by the retirement system. You can only make, because she's going to only get, you're going to work 19.5 hours. Okay, and she, so she has to just make sure she follows the regulations of the retirement system.
So the short answer is yes, Sam, like, if, if we gave her 3% across the board, she would get 3%. But again, she has to calculate her hours and the dollars she's making in Barry, so she doesn't get penalized by the retirement board, because when she meets the threshold of what she can earn as a retiree, collecting a pension in the state of Massachusetts.
She can't work.
They take dollar for dollar, once you meet that threshold, so you're just working for nothing. And they may even stop your retirement checks until you get caught up, and then you gotta get, try to get them to send you your checks again, so I guess. You gotta give you, I keep very close tabs on mine.
Do you work under the 20 hours too?
Oh, yeah.
You do too?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's a very part-time gig.
That's fine.
But, but, but I enjoy it, gives me something, keeps my head in the game on something I've been doing my whole career.
So it, it'll be 19.5 hours.
Sure.
With the hourly rate is, and you stay within the parameters of the retirement system. Because we can't help you if you go over.
Right.
Okay, we, we can't, we just say, oh, it's okay, she can, no, we can't. It's a personal relationship that you have with the retirement system. Just wanted to have to be very clear, because I know many people got themselves in difficulty with this, and they get to the end and they're supposed to pay it back, and they just can't. Because they've already spent it.
Okay, I'll definitely keep that in mind.
Well, you laugh, but it's true. See, there, there are some positions, you know, in, within the Commonwealth where there's considered critical need, and those individuals are allowed to over, you know, to make more money.
Correct.
You know?
That's fine.
Okay.
Like during COVID, I worked in public health, we could, it didn't matter what we made then during COVID.
Yeah.
That's what was critical.
And they took all the restrictions away, but now they've put those restrictions back on now.
That's fine.
Okay, do we, do we need a, do we need, I think it's clear, I don't think there's any need to vote, other than the 19.5 hours would be what we would limit your opportunity to work here with. Okay? Okay, good. Just so we understand that, all right, so I think we're good. And so I would suspect, I don't, I don't know about what the process would be from a personnel matter, do we need to repost and advertise that position? Or do we just authorize that?
Well, I hate to say what has past practice been, but that's what I would go with at this point.
I don't know if anybody, I don't, I don't.
I can't think of any retirees that have come back, can you, Mary?
Mr. Landry?
Oh, yeah, oh, he can, Michael, yeah, Michael did, yeah, he retired and came back.
And Jesse, he had, he did something, but his was a little bit different, but he did the same kind of thing, they put him, I don't, how he.
He hasn't retired yet, though.
He wasn't retired.
Yeah, Michael did retire, you're right.
I think, I think there's two different things, like, your, your planning board is elected, so they could simply just send me an email saying, Mary Ann's retiring, we'd like to hire her back after the two weeks of the 19.5 hours, that, what are you, 2413 an hour? But then the Concom is appointed by.
Owned by us.
You guys, so that's where it would get a little stickier with whatever it is that you.
So we would have to reappoint her?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that something you could vote on tonight?
I don't think I'd do that without the Conservation Commission providing something to us in writing indicating that that was their desire.
Can you do it verbally?
What's the problem with to get, get them to do it?
I just want to make sure for my retirement date that I have everything in line, that's all.
Well, I mean, this has nothing to do with your ability to retire, we just need them to provide us with a written thing that this, they would like to continue your employment subsequent to your retirement, which is December 30th, right?
Have you discussed that, Ron? Ron, Ron, have you discussed that?
Yeah, I mean, we're a shaver of it.
Yeah, so just, just indicate that you voted it and send us a little note, and we're ready to go.
We'll do that.
Yeah, we're meeting again on the 15th.
Yeah, so it's.
So I, I do have a question, just because we have people, like, combining jobs for full time, which I know you're not going to be benefited anymore, so it's not a big deal, but like, what hours are you getting paid from the planning board versus?
Half and half.
Conservation, okay, so it'll end up being half and half?
Yeah, and zoning board I do whenever it comes up, and it's just kind of like with summer in the budget. I don't meet with them that much, it could be twice a year, it could be four a year, it could be zero. So that, that was decided that when?
You're hardly retiring.
Well, I, I really like my boards, so, it's half of the work I was doing, so that's.
I may add, boards really like Mary Ann.
Okay, so we, we good? You guys are going to give us the thing for, okay, planning board can kind. You guys are going to give us the thing for, okay, planning board can kind of do their thing without us, and we're, we're good to go.
I think Mallory just wants something from you, Floyd.
Yeah, if you could just send me an email just saying that as the planning board. Yeah, okay, yep, you can just send that.
Good.
Just that way there's no question in the future of anything, it's all solved.
Because your agreement to do this is really not with the town. It's really, we are saying, okay, we're going to pay somebody nineteen point five hours or whatever. And you have to make sure you comply with the retirement staff, that's all.
I understand.
Okay. So, you understand that, we're, and you'll be back, and so, we're good. And you're going to send us the letters indicating you would like her to be reappointed. You just send us a thing saying she's been reappointed by you guys.
I'll put it on the twelve fifteen agenda just to make it official.
Thank you.
Our secretary is incredibly diligent, so I'm sure she'll get that right down to you.
So, Mary Ann, I would just say, happy two-week vacation.
Is that?
Have a nice two-week vacation.
Oh, yeah, I was trying to think of what I have to do, like, go away, or you guys be all right?
Well, it's, it's January, so maybe you want to go south. Okay, thank you.
Is everything, I don't know about the, we did the sick time and the vacation time, that's all set, I guess, for last?
That's, that's coming up.
It's on the agenda.
It's still on there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, planning board sixty-one A write-in first refusal presentation to the select board. I think that's you, Floyd, you up?
Yeah, do you want to stand up?
Well, sure. Public Pubby likes that better.
Yeah, so, we just want to raise the question on how the select board sees their role in the right of first refusal. There's been a number of times when properties have come up that have been in sixty-one program, A B, sixty-one A, which, when they remove it from the program, the town has a right of first refusal. Now, we're going through the master plan, if you read through the master plan, it says on, you know, at length that people in town are very appreciate and would like to conserve the open space. Open space allows for a viable agricultural community, forestry community. So, it's one of those, and then also too, the, the tax base. And a lot of times the concern is that if we have additional open space converted to residential, then we'll have additional tax revenue. But from my understanding, it all depends on the infrastructure in the town. And we're working with CMRPC to see if they can come up with some underlying, you know, guideline that we can go by to assess how much money we're collecting and how much money we're spending based on each use of commercial, industrial, you know, residential, open space. But a lot of times it is determined that open space is the most cost-effective thing for a town because the number of services they use are exponentially. So, with residential, even though it's the bulk of our revenue, it ends up being by far the bulk of our expenses. We have the school system, we have a water system right now that's in need of repair, we have sewer system that is in need of repair, police, fire, ambulance, every one of those services we've been slashing funding for because we just can't afford them. So, it's one of those where like, you just kind of understand that, how the select board sees their right of first refusal in managing the cost of the town.
Well, is somebody making this property available?
We have a property right now that we are in reviewing plans for a subdevelopment. So, not that this is about any particular project, but it is one of those that, in the past, I, I think that we haven't taken the right of first refusal seriously when we're looking to develop the town moving forward. And that is kind of the give and take of the sixty-one program is that they're given a substantial tax break in order for the town to have that right of first refusal for a limited time to manage growth. So, right now, where we have the possible subdevelopment being proposed, the town is, you know, pretty, I guess, in debt to some degree on our services that go to residential. And it's at this point, could we make ourselves more financially solvent if we begin to restrict some of this development that tends to cost us quite a bit of money?
Are you speaking about that specific property on Longway Road?
No, I'm just speaking in that way.
I, I mean, from my perspective, obviously, it would be something that would have to be a case-by-case basis.
Oh, absolutely.
You, you, you know, you, you give us some, some good insight and information, but the concern that, that I have is how much open space is too much open space, I have to be concerned about that. But I agree with you about the cost of residential expansion, if there is, you know, a real desire for that in the community. And I do think it would be helpful for, this is personal, for the planning board and the select board to, when occasions arise, that we would have conversations about this. But it's an awful heavy burden to just say, well, we'll just put more money, more in sixty-one A, and somehow we'll come up with the money to buy the property. I'm guessing that the cost of the properties that some of you are talking about are substantial.
I would say it has to be determined, but I mean, the value of open space is kind of questionable at this point, depending on what. I mean, I know people in town that have bought, you know, thirty-eight or parcels for a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So, the cost of land depends on frontage, you know, wetland resources, you know, development potential. So, there are a lot of things that go into valuing the.
Yeah, so I, I think it would have to be a case-by-case basis, I mean, for the, for the planning board and for the select board to, to sort of look at the first rate, the first, because we'd have to come up with considerable amounts of money to do this on any kind of regular basis. And that's difficult right now. I mean, for us to come up with, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to buy or two hundred thousand dollars to save some more open space for the, you know, would be, would be tough.
I don't believe we've ever exercised that, have we?
I've never, not in my timeframe. We, we had the opportunity for some of your dad's property at one time for right of first refusal, and we did not exercise that.
A lot of times, I agree, parcels aren't really worth conserving. They're usually, you know, in too small, the area that they're in doesn't have any sort of environmental impact.
Right.
So, it's one of those, I do agree, it is a case-by-case.
Right.
But also too, the right of first refusal is transferable. So, that's the thing, that there are a lot of land trust organizations that we could work with that would be able to provide some legal resources, financial assistance. So, we're not on our own when it comes to preserving land. And a lot of them too, for, as far as maintaining the, the tax base, they don't need to go to a nonprofit, a nonprofit could take the property, hold it, sell the development rights, and then sell the property in its entirety to somebody that would keep it in agricultural forestry, any of the programs that are, that's being represented. So, it's, it's not, the burden doesn't necessarily financially fall on the town, but it's the select board's duty to take that initiative.
The problem is, where would it end? You know what I mean? If we do, if, if it's, if it's done in a way to block development, it just go to another one, another, another. There's plenty around, there's plenty of open, you know, I have property, Rich has property, you know?
Yeah, but that's.
Where would, if, 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 if the reason is, you know, that we're doing this to, you know, pull something, block something, it just, move to another property. Then what?
Well, but it, it's not that we're pulling one thing, I think it's proper management. And when you go by the case-by-case basis, you say, what is the best use?
We're talking a lot of money, a lot of money.
No, absolutely, and that's why I'm trying not to have this as a, you know, looking at a specific property, but just as this is a tool in the toolbox.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that, you know, we have some sort of understanding on when it's best used.
A lot of the sixty-one As, and I'm familiar with where they came out, were family, like somebody, like a kid wanted to build a house on the farm, so if they didn't break out the six acres, they came out of sixty-one A, they rolled back, tax cut paid, and the kid built a house on the farm, and.
I don't, I think the policy allows you to remove a house lot without any penalty.
Yeah.
As long as, as long as you maintain six acres.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta maintain six acres, so if you only had three acres to build a house on.
Well, I, I think, I think the concern is certainly for some public bring to me. They say, okay, Mount Ida, East Quabon Land Trust, et cetera, et cetera. You know, how much land that they have, you know, taken in the last X number of years. Where River watershed, Quabon's watershed. You know, twenty-eight percent of our property is already gobbled up with that, and the restrictions there are ever more restrictive. I probably know that, right? And so, when you think about, you know, all of, all of the, when we talked with Heidrick the other day, they were bemoaning the amount of land that they have ended up in sixty-one A, and now they, they can, they can't survive. I mean, we think we're in bad shape till you talk to them. And, and when you, when you kind of look at, anything that's up on Pleasant Street, anything is gone like this to the inside meditation. They're looking to build sixty more, you know, eight, you know, dwellings and so forth for their people who visit with them. And they're wonderful stewards of their land, I'm not saying they're not, but they're, you know, they're tax-exempt.
Did you allot over that?
Well, what they do is they give us thirty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
And every, every other, you know, every other thing, anything that's for sale up there is gone. The Otterbon has another big chunk up there that's gone. So, the open space that's available in the community is already substantial. And managing it going forward, I think, is important. But I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, it has to be a case-by-case basis, and I don't know if people think that they can stop bliss by simply having the selectmen say, we're going to buy the land. One, we don't have the money to buy the land, but we'd have to have, you know. And then, would that mean that they just go to some other parcel in the community and say, oh, this looks good, this is a good, good spot, we'll, we'll be, I, I don't know. But my concern just is, we would love to work very closely with you people on this, it's an important thing. But I don't think that there's any indication that we are ready to say, we're going to put, put as much land in trusts and sixty-one A as we possibly can. Because then you leave whatever infrastructure we need to pay for, okay, on the backs of who currently live in the community, and that's it. And people, big thing people say when you're going to run for selecting, we want you to bring industry to the town of Barry. Okay, that's almost impossible because nobody really wants it. They want it somewhere else, they don't want it in the town. And beside that, because of our location, it's kind of difficult to really, you know, encourage a lot of industrial development here. Or even, you know, people putting stores and stuff, we lost our pharmacy, which is, which is huge and stuff to people. So, when you, when you look at it, you say, is it, is it a good idea to just put more, have the trusts come in here and take more and more and more of our land? That allows us no opportunity for, you know, expansion for industry. Nobody wants industry either, they say they do, but then it comes down to it. So, you end up that the people who are left to pay the bill, every time it goes into sixty-one A, it's less and less and less that you access, you have to, to tax, to tax revenue. And unfortunately, and Barry, you probably know this better than I do, Floyd, the fastest-growing part of our population is sixty-five and over, they're aging in place. That's kind of unusual, that usually they sell off and things, you know, turn over to younger people. That's not happening as quickly because not only that, we have a huge portion of people who end up over ninety and a hundred. That's a good thing, but it's, it's just, you know, so there's a lot of land that's just stuck, that, that just stays the way it has been for years and years and years. And yet, the amount of services that people over sixty-five and so forth need continue to grow. I mean, I know you can such say the schools are really bad, but certainly ambulance services and so forth, I mean, we're struggling with ambulance services.
It kind of makes me my point, that the residential units are the ones that cost the money. We're not sending an ambulance up to a farmer's field, we're not sending a fire truck up there very much. So, again, it's one of those that.
But you have to, you have to look at, what's that community about? Is it about the people and having young people, young people with families as well as having a bunch of open land with nothing but open land? And you don't have opportunities for families to come in, be able to have access to schools and so on and so forth, to me, makes, makes little sense, it's not building a community.
Homes, he's building five hundred thousand dollar homes, and he says the, the brunt of his clientele are seniors that are doing the one bedroom so that somebody can come and visit. So, even to say that new development is going to bring young kids in, that's a greater financial issue right now that you get a five hundred thousand dollar home, and you get a kid making twenty-two dollars an hour managing McDonald's. The homeownership is kind of a dead idea in this country right now for most young adults. So, that's a whole nother problem we're trying to deal with. The point that I'm trying to make is, every dollar from a residential home averages out to a dollar ten in services. So, it doesn't matter how many dollars you bring in, if every dollar costs a dollar ten, it's a negative return on investment. So, a lot of times a residential, even though it's the bulk of your income, it ends up ultimately being a negative return on investment. Whereas the open space, even though you're getting less money, it is a slow but positive return on investment.
Well, it is, and it is, and it is.
Yeah, I mean, we need to do the evaluation, that's what we're working CMRPC.
Did they say they could actually do that model?
He said it would be way too hard, but he's going to try to break it down as much as he can to see how much tax revenue we're getting in from commercial, industrial, residential. And then we can work with the fire, ambulance, police, and see what they would allot their response to. Because I think it is one of those that we can't just keep presuming that, you know, the residential development is bringing in money and then realize that we're losing, because again, I mean, we're, the financial crisis we're in right now isn't due to open space, it's due to residential development and the taxing on our, your infrastructure. So, hopefully, we just don't keep digging all deeper and deeper. I mean, a lot of cities and towns, a lot of cities and towns also have infrastructure burdens where they receive a grant to put additional infrastructure in fifteen, twenty years down the road, but they're not getting the grant from anyone. So, again, it's one of that, that growth model that ends up just digging you deeper. And it's like a, you know, sugar rush, you know, we get all this development, everybody's excited, and then all of a sudden, you know, it's time to actually pay the bills, and you don't get money for that. So, that's one of the things I want to make sure that we don't just keep on burdening this town, you know, more heavily with residential development that we can't afford. When we have the opportunities to buy appropriate open space, I think we should take that seriously. And it's not financially strapped on the town when we can work with other organizations. And there is the other one too, for additional tax money, the, oh, I forget the acronym for it, but it, it works with open space, historic, you know, community projects. So, it allows, we have to vote it in the town meeting.
Community preservation.
Yeah, yeah, so that's a matching program from the state.
It's not one hundred percent matching anymore.
No.
And the, and the match is going down, lower and lower.
More people that get into it, okay.
Yes.
But even if we get any money from that, so those are, there's other programs that we could be looking into that may bring, you know, more solomcy to the town, more predictability, but.
You would also have to get that passed because that's just another tax to the people who live here.
It is, yeah, but every, every day.
It would be an additional tax.
Yep, but it's one of those too that, you know, we just painted the town hall. So, if we could have got fifty percent of that paid for through the grant, then in a sense, even if we're paying more, if our overall tax burden goes down, then we could possibly lower our valuation tax and in the end pay less. Or we could maybe get caught up on some of this debt that we're in. But one or the other, we got to pay the bills, so.
Yeah, we do.
So, I just wanted to bring that point, kind of give a, see your thoughts on stuff.
Can I just, can I comment?
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very curious, keep, keep me in tune on that study that they're doing.
Yeah, hopefully we can pull up some numbers that make sense, but it is one of those that, it's, it's hard to determine because a lot of times it depends on your position. So, if the town has, like, we're in a position where we have a lot of empty seats at Quabon, so that would be a positive for growth, but our water sewer is maxed out, our police, fire, ambulance.
I don't believe our sewer is maxed out.
Sewer's not maxed out.
Sewer's.
What was that seven hundred and something thousand that we just spent?
Well, it just needed to be upgraded.
Right, but again, that's my point, that.
But it, but it, it's not that we can't handle more gallons, we can. So, it's not maxed out.
It was just a plant upgrade because the plant was old.
Did Tom mention any of that to you with the, when you met with him the other day?
Mentioned what?
Think how much more they can take on, it was quite a net, because when I went through Torrey, he said that we could, we could take on a lot more.
But again, that's all, you know, expenses based on, you know, development. That's my point, that those things, just because of bringing money in, that's, I mean, you got to make sure that it's positive to your expense. So, we, the town just spent a significant amount of money to bolster that system, so. Mary Ann, hopefully, we got to get some numbers out and see if it makes sense.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Moving along to, so I assume if this parcel that you're, you know, working with now, that one, that you will be keeping us apprised of where we might be helpful with that.
Yeah, the other thing too, so in the language from the town, on the sixty-one program, it says, I believe the language is planned when you plan to change, and from the state, it's based on intent. So, that's one of the things that we've asked our legal counsel, and it seems like we never get a definitive answer from anybody, and they always fall back on, well, it's not necessary, so we're not going to advise yet. But it is one of those that there are two different words, and I believe that if there's two different words. two different words from two different programs, then either one would be the trip. So when an individual plans on doing something, or when they demonstrate intent, I mean, that seems like that's a pretty initial stage. And when somebody's presented a plan, that, a legitimate plan, I mean, I think that would cross the threshold for the town to begin to actively pursue that.
But it also details that they shall send a letter noticing a change...
Yep.
...in sixty-one A.
But the thing, so if they built a casino up there, or, you know, an amusement park, and they never sent the letter, I think at some point, if they're not gonna do it and they've crossed that threshold, that would be on the select board to say, "By the way, we're not gonna allow any additional progress until this letter is sent."
But you could also roll a coin and get a preliminary or definitive subdivision plan, but still, hey, they'll use it for the next thirty years and not even build a subdivision. Because the subdivision preliminary or definitive plan, if the planning board should issue such, just locks in that zoning for that potential project that may happen next year or thirty years from now. So he could still farm it, potentially, right? And never build it. He's just locking the zoning in.
Correct.
Potentially.
Right, but there's a limited timeline that we have to exercise our per se refusal. So if somebody presents something that could be economically detrimental to the town, and if they say they're not gonna do it for ten years, then we're giving away our right to control development. So there's a lot of timelines that come into play. And I think ultimately, we should be looking at what is best for the town and see if somebody does want to do additional development. I mean, a lot of that development we have out on the Harbick side, you know, busing is the major, one of the major costs of the school system. So when you allow for development out in the far reaches of town on these roads that aren't designed for having a school bus and a trash truck and a dump truck proceeding in a direction at the same time, and we've had to miss that vote. Most of the projects in Barry has been developed, we looked at the maps, but I think we'd be in a better financial position if we allowed, didn't allow for a lot of that far-flung development one way or the other.
Yeah, it's just sad, though, because you could have generational families that have owned that land and paid their taxes and done their due diligence at the town of Barry, and the kid wants to build out there, and you're gonna deny him?
No, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that when we have the opportunity...
You know, so you gotta weigh all of it in, weigh all of it in, too, because there's a lot of old-time generational families in town that we paid the dues, and they paid the dues for generations in this town.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that domain is entirely different topic.
So my kid wants to build a house on the farm, my kid's gonna build a house on the farm, I'll find a way. I mean, it's just...
Okay, then.
It's just the way, you know, just seriously, the way it is.
No, but I agree. And there's, they have permission for that, but also, too, when you sign a contract, and the contract is a give-and-take, you can't receive, and then when the take part of the agreement comes in, you say, "Oh, you're violating my rights," then you shouldn't have, you shouldn't have signed the contract. So right now, we have an individual that has signed a contract that has a give-and-a-take, and he's taken, and if we decide to take our end of it, I mean, there's, you know, there's no victim there. That's a, that's business. And I think that we have the right to have control over the development of our town. And I'm not saying that anybody that has a property that'd like to, you know, profit from it, we should take away their right to profit, but when somebody does enter a contract, I think we have the right to enact that contract.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Have you asked for a determination on those two words?
We've tried, we haven't really got a thorough response yet.
Okay.
I think it's one of those that it comes down to whether or not we're gonna push the issue, and they don't believe that there's, it's worth spending the time to do a review unless we come to the determination that we would like to act on.
It's funny, because we're paying them. Well, we're paying the lawyers, so if we want an answer to the question, we should get an answer to the question.
Yeah, and we could tell them to pursue that answer. But right now, it just didn't seem like it was worth spending money on a determination that we may not ever act on. So I think if we decide to act, then it would be worth pursuing that determination.
Understood.
Seeing at what point we can tell them that they've crossed those thresholds and we are requiring, requesting that letter.
Understood. Thank you.
Thanks again, Floyd, for your coming.
Good information, Floyd, thank you.
Okay, moving on.
As long as the planning board and the conservation board and the selectmen work hand-in-hand to resolve this issue that Floyd is speaking of, as long as you all work closely so that we don't get caught with our pants down.
Well, the thing of it is, it has to be by parcel by parcel, you know? You just can't basically make a huge decision about what you're gonna do without really understanding each parcel that might become involved in this. So the planning board has to be actively involved in it and inform the select board, and so, I mean, certainly, the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission can be helpful, but quite frankly, you sort of look at, you know, Rutland kind of went crazy, building, 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 building. I mean, let's face it, they really went crazy. I don't, and Hardwick went the other way with, you know, sixty-one A, sixty-one A, sixty-one A, as did New Brain...
Quavon Lands.
Not New Braintree. And trust me when I tell you, they're in far worse shape than Barry, because they have no, no revenues coming in from any really new development. And, you know, so it's difficult in our small communities. You know, how much open space is too much, I don't know. How many, not much of it. And the size of families is very different now than when probably all of us were, you know, in high school. All of the families, I can remember teaching at Quavon and, you know, members of years ago, and for sure, if I had one Smith kid, I was gonna have at least three more, because their families were large. And now, if there's one and two children per family, that's more typical family size now. And you have the same number of housing units, but far fewer children in them, quite frankly. And far-flung bus routes have been a thing in Barry since the start of the schools. Not just recently, that we've been hustling buses up to the, some of those farms located on very far-flung properties, but, you know, anyway. More discussion later on. Okay, moving on. Old Business, Mary Ann Gendron requests for payout of sick vacation time upon retirement, which was going to be December thirty-first, I understand. Janine Pimental requests for payout of sick and vacation time upon retirement. I know that you, Town Administrator, has spent some time with these concerns, and I would love to have her give us a summary of what the situation is as she sees it.
Well, I believe the last meeting, we just said that we were gonna change the personnel policy, those sections of the personnel policy to have before and after. And I did actually take the liberty of changing some other things while I was at it, since I was in there. But if you turn to the...
So this would mean that the old people who are just retiring will have the old language.
Well, it's...
Just to put it that way. New people, younger people who are gonna retire ten years from now...
These people still working, that have been here twenty-five, thirty years, they will be retired at some point, soon.
Exactly.
So we gotta have some level of protection for them folks who thought they were getting the benefit that we don't wanna take away from.
So I believe I said the before and after date, just because I didn't know what date you were looking for. I said the before and after date for December first of twenty-twenty-five.
Oh, well, can we argue with that?
Yeah. So I don't know, I don't know what date you wanna go with. I just put it December first of twenty-twenty-five, just because that's today.
Well, that's tonight. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
We hire somebody out to tonight.
After tonight.
The new standards would apply to them.
I mean, that's really the significant issue that we have to determine immediately.
Yeah, yeah, to make sure that it's in there, just accept that date, and then we can look at everything else. I did go in today and look at both of their accruals. So for, at this time, with adding in for December, for the sick time, Mary Ann would get paid out for the sick, if she didn't take any sick. At the four-hundred-and-eighty hours, eleven thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars and forty cents, I believe, thereabouts. And then for the vacation time, she has two-hundred-and-ninety hours, that would be seven thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and seventy cents, for a total of nineteen thousand, forty-two dollars and ten cents, and that would have to be split. Ellen gave me the time that would be owed to her at the town clerk's office, and then the rest of it would have to be split between planning CONCON and ZBIA. So the planning board would also have to make sure that you'd have money to hire her back after the payout.
Right, that's my question. Once we make the payout, is there gonna be money left in the line item for the rest of the year?
To have her back, because you'd have to pay that out and pay her when she comes back. I don't know.
I'll consult the secretary when we have an afternoon meeting.
Okay. And I will, I will...
You know what I mean?
I will give you the amounts that will be coming from the town clerk's office, and then the amount that would be left.
One thing that's generally required, and it may be in here, I haven't looked at that part of the, is that there needs to be, and when you say you're gonna retire, it has to be in the previous fiscal year, so we can build the budget around the need to pay out this amount. For example, if you're gonna retire in the Quavon Regional School District, you must give one year's notice so that they can put it in the budget and then pay it out.
Well, this did say six months, but that's why they came here, because it's six months, and I said you have to get permission from the board to go get the personnel.
Right, so the planning board's portion to pay out her earned time might leave you with no dollars for the rest of the year.
Okay.
Will you give me the breakdown between the two departments?
Yep.
Yeah, so I could, no?
Good.
Okay.
Okay. And so, you know, for new folks who are looking to retire next year, we should say to them, "Look, you gotta let us know you're gonna retire early," so that we can get it into the, like, we should be putting, if someone is gonna retire this time next year, we need to be putting this in the budget that we're working on.
Well, and it might say six months in here, because I think Worcester Regional likes a six-month notice.
Right, that's where it came from.
So that's probably why that's in here, because, I mean, somebody might not know if they're gonna retire a year before.
Oh, well. Oh, well.
Well, what'd you do when a teacher got sick?
Well, if a teacher gets sick, that's one different thing.
That's a long time, yeah.
That's, a year is a very long time. I'm with you on that one. So then, moving on to Janine, she has, she will have approximately three-hundred-and-nineteen hours to get paid out in sick time, which would be, that's sick time, right, seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and forty-seven cents, and two-hundred-and-twenty-nine hours, thereabout, in vacation, which would be five thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents, for a total of thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. The only problem with Janine is that I'm gonna have to get creative in trying to figure out what comes from the treasure collector's office and what comes from the fire department, because there hasn't, nobody's kept good records like Ellen did in the town clerk's office.
Okay.
So that one, I'm gonna have to work with, and I'll just have a discussion with Janes as well.
So we know what the total is, and we're gonna vote the totals tonight?
Um, yeah.
And then you decide how...
Estimated to be about, because they could still use time, it's only December first.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah.
Estimated to be about.
Okay. I would look for a vote to authorize Mary Ann Gendron's retirement for payout of sick and vacation time be calculated by the town administrator not to exceed nineteen thousand, twelve dollars and...
No, forty-two dollars and ten cents.
Forty-two dollars and ten cents.
Oh, so...
Nineteen thousand, forty-two dollars and ten cents.
Okay, forty, sorry, I thought that was forty-two dollars and ten cents. Okay, not to exceed. So if you take a sick time or something, it'd be a little less, but, right, okay? And for Janine Pimental, that her sick time and vacation time payout not exceed thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars.
And ninety-eight cents.
And ninety-eight cents?
Ninety-eight cents.
Ninety-eight, yeah. Thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Do you want a separate motion for each one of them?
That'd be fine, yes. A separate motion for Mary Ann Gendron, if the numbers indicated, a total of fourteen, nineteen thousand, forty-two, ten.
I would move to approve your request for payout with sick and vacation time upon retirement for Mary Ann Gendron, as presented by the chairman.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion being seconded to authorize the payment of sick and vacation time upon retirement, as calculated by the town administrator, read into the record earlier, and authorized or agreed to by Mary Ann Gendron, who's present this evening. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With our thanks.
Yeah, thank you, too.
See ya, see ya in mid-January.
Yeah. I really enjoy my boards.
Okay, Janine Pimental, could I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the second vacation time accrued for Janine Pimental not to exceed the amount of thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to authorize the payout for sick and vacation time upon retirement for Janine Pimental not to exceed thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looks like a vote. Okay, changes to the fringe benefits section of personnel policy, vote.
So I kind of took the liberty to just go through this section while I was looking at the sick and vacation and figuring out stuff for Janine and Mary Ann. So I, you could accept some of this, none of this, whatever you wanna do. I will put in the date of the twelve-one twenty-twenty-five for the born-after payout, though. So, starting with the eligible holidays, I added in Juneteenth.
Right.
Okay? And that it will not be, floating holidays cannot be carried over to the next fiscal year, was already in there, and I added, and will not be paid out upon termination of employment, just to make that very clear. So the stuff in blue, I actually sent this to Kim, the labor law person, I can't remember her last name. The stuff in red is mine, some of it is just correcting on things. Let's see, so the vacation time, I kind of took the liberty of offering you this option, because currently, the way the policy reads, somebody who's here for a year, it can be, like, their first year, it's interpreted as they get zero vacation. So you're hiring somebody in October, and that poor person cannot take time off...
Yeah.
...until the following October, which is cruel and unusual punishment.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So this chart, I actually stole from Lester, brought it to Phillipston as well. So what happens is, if you have two weeks' vacation on these dates that you get hired, you take the eighty hours and multiply it by that amount, so that it's prorated what you're getting for your first year. But at least that way, somebody can take something off.
Now, is there, I see that there's a recognition that, do all of the employee contracts, like the fire, and then the police, and the DPW, I think adhere to this? I think they do.
I know the Teamsters do, because I looked at that with Tom, and I told him that I was hoping to be able to change this, because it's, I mean, it's hard to hire people when you don't get a time off, because you're not supposed to call in sick. So hopefully, this will make a difference with hiring people as well.
Yeah.
Because if I, if I had to be hired under this, I would, thank you.
Okay, well, I just think that, I know we have the police and the DPW contracts will be open this year, so we can probably work the language. Okay, no problem.
Absolutely. And I do, I don't know where it's worded in here, but it is ninety-day probationary period.
Yeah.
It's pretty standard.
Wherever that is in here. So, and I did also take the liberty of adjusting the earnings a little bit. So I did one to four years at two weeks, which I believe is what it was anyway.
Yeah.
And then five to nine years, I did three weeks. And then five to nine years, I did three weeks. And that was, the three weeks was actually five years to fifteen years.
Right.
You know, I mean, if somebody's here for ten years, give them three weeks vacation, for Pete's sake. And then ten to nineteen, I changed to four weeks. And then twenty years and over, I changed to five weeks, where before, you had to be here for twenty-five years before you got five weeks vacation. I mean, that's, that's a long time to work for five weeks vacation.
Did you note any kind of cumul, is there any, for example, how many hours can you accumulate total?
So what I did, you mean to carry over?
Yeah.
I did one week's vacation to carry over instead of two, because you want people to take their vacation. You don't want them deported.
So if I'm...
And that cuts down on our liabilities with paying out as well. Although I did add a caveat in here that carried over vacation will not be paid out upon leaving employment.
So take your vacation is the, is the word?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
That would make sense.
Because then you end up with people just carrying it over to get paid out when they're going to leave.
Yeah.
I'm just seeing if there's anything else that's really...
Would you mind if we just held a vote on this until the nineteenth, the fifteenth?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But if you can just vote the before and after of December first, that would be good. That way, we don't have to worry about that, that's done. But the rest of this, please, absolutely take a look at it.
So that's G.
Um, I don't know what page you're on.
I think it's G. Any town employee hired prior to twelve-one twenty-twenty-five upon retirement in conjunction with requirements of the county retirement system?
I don't know where you are.
G is at the top of the page.
I don't know what page you're on.
It doesn't have page numbers, I can't give you a page number.
I know, I didn't put any page numbers.
Is that G?
Okay, yes, yes. So if you can vote on that, and then I thought, yeah, that's fine, that's all you really do.
Should we read that whole thing into the record?
I would just indicate that the item, I can read it quickly into the record. I would recommend that we, the board, take action only on one specific aspect of what has been presented to us, and that we take another two weeks to seriously look at all of the other aspects that have been recommended to take action. And take action only on the following. Any town employee hired prior to twelve-one twenty-twenty-five upon retiring in conjunction with the requirements of the county retirement system, who has accumulated sick leave, shall be compensated the number of days not to exceed four hundred and eighty hours at his, his or her pay rate upon retirement, provided that they have twenty years of benefited service in the town and have notified the town of their intent to retire at least six months in advance. Any town employee hired on or after twelve-one twenty-twenty-five upon retiring in conjunction with requirements of the county retirement system, who has accumulated sick leave due to them, shall be compensated at their rate of pay upon retirement, provided they have twenty years of benefited services in the town and have notified the town of their intent to retire at least six months in advance.
So the one thing that highlight that's there, I don't know what you want to pay out for employees hired after twelve-one twenty-twenty-five.
So you...
That's the question. Because right, right now, the people before that, it'll be four hundred and eighty hours. I don't know what you want to do for the people after that.
Right.
So in thinking about it, technically, we don't really need to have you vote this, because you already voted to pay out Mary Ann and Janine, so we should be good if you actually want to take time to think about it.
Well, I would take time then to probably wait and...
I know, and I had a hundred days, and I got ten dollars a day.
Well, hey, didn't spend it all in one place, I hope.
I didn't.
Good.
But that was how that paid out, ten bucks a day.
So, yeah.
A lot of money.
Give that some serious thought.
Okay.
Just because, I mean, once we have it in there, we probably really shouldn't change it again.
Yeah, okay.
So, so if there's, let me see if there's other things in here that I, that I definitely want to point out to you guys. I just added, like, if somebody's out on workers' comp, they're still getting, earning their vacation credit. Let me see. Oh, again, on the sick time, I don't know how much you want to have carried over. I believe it's currently six hundred hours to carry over from one year to the next, so think about that as well. So unbenefited part-time employees, per state law, they should be getting sick time for, the minimum is one hour of sick time for every thirty hours that they work. I don't think that's been done here. You can increase it to two hours of sick time for every thirty hours, but the, the least has to be one hour of sick time. And then you can just vote to decide what they can carry over. They don't have to carry over anything, or they can carry over whatever they want. So that's brand new to this. And the ninety days of service before they can use it. Okay, and then getting to personal leave, so I took, once again, I took the liberty of changing this, and you can accept it or not. But the way that it was, three days of personal leave after ten full years, you get one day after a full year, two days after five full years, and three days after ten. To me, personal time is very important to employees, because if you need to do insurance paperwork, or you know what I mean, you have something important that you need to, it's not vacation, it's not sick. You don't want people calling in sick when they're doing something that's not sick, because they don't have vacation, or they don't want to eat into their one week vacation they have, or whatever. So think about that if you want to do, because it would be the same thing prorated to date of hire for the year, but basically, then, at the beginning of every fiscal year, everybody would just get the three days to use throughout the year. Or you can just say, nope, go back to the other way.
Is there a need for individuals to seek approval of the use of personal day?
Um, did I put it in there? Yes. Personal leave must be requested by an employee forty-eight hours prior to, oh, that was already in here. The department had made the request. Unused personal time, I did put that in there, will not be rolled over, will not be paid out. And then Kim had put in, must be used for personal business that cannot otherwise be conducted outside of the workday.
Is that July one, twenty-fifteen, or twenty-twenty-five?
Um, that's what it said, twenty-fifteen. That's when they started, that's when that was, must have been amended for twenty-fifteen. So, and then I was looking at the bereavement time as well. So it was like three days for a spouse, a parent, a child, who's going to come back to work after three days of death of a part, it's not going to happen. So I changed that to one work week. And I did add in, somebody had requested that we add in grandchild to that one work week. I added it in, but let me know if you'd want to take it back out, just because of the way families are now. There are so many grandparents taking care of grandchildren.
True.
So that's why that was asked for. Yeah, and then I added in granted immediately following a death. I don't remember how it was murdered, and I don't want to read through the whole thing, but they, the other policy said that you could use sick time for somebody being dead, but they're dead, so it's not family sick. So, yeah. Which is another reason for expanding it to the one week, because it's not really family sick if they're no longer with us.
FML? What was that, FML?
No, no, it just said sick, you can use sick time for, but it's not really family sick. I mean, it's one thing if it's a sick time for you, because you've had, you know, a breakdown or whatever, but, you know, not, not for adding to bereavement for bereavement purposes.
Okay, so we'll take action on only the December first, twenty-twenty-five, this evening?
I don't think you really have to though, if you want to, yeah. Because you already voted Janine.
We'll wait, wait for...
They're all set. It's just what we do going forward.
Okay.
And I'll put this on the twelve-fifteen agenda. And if there's any changes that any of you want to see in here before then, let me know, and I can revise it and then send it to all three of you, you know what I mean? So we don't just keep going round and round.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Melanie, for your work on this. And thank you, Mary Ann, for all of your years of work and for the many more to come. Hey, I'm all, I'm all, I'm all good with that.
You're not either, right?
No.
Well, I'm not in a paid, paid job.
You've got to keep moving. It's healthy. It's very healthy. Got to have a purpose every day to get out of bed.
Okay, we will be reviewing this again at our fifteenth meeting, make sure that gets on the agenda for our next time. Melanie, do you have any other things that you'd like us to discuss before we adjourn?
Thank you, have a good night, Mary Ann. Just the snowstorm tomorrow. I know we are going to be here at ten-thirty to go over, to go over the draft warrant and then vote on the remaining articles. I have absolutely zero issues with driving the snow, so I will definitely be here.
Well, I will definitely be here as well. Yeah.
I will not.
I don't think it's going to be that bad at ten-thirty.
Oh, you're going to be working.
But I'll phone in.
I think it's starting around nine. I don't think ten-thirty will be a problem.
No.
You have to do the meeting, we have to do it.
Oh, yeah, no big deal.
Yeah, we'll be all right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if you're going on the state roads, Mark takes good care of you.
Two A.
I don't drive on two A. Well, until when, I intend, I guess I do.
They do thirty-two, right?
Yeah. Okay, you do that for me?
Thirty-two, one-twenty-two.
I'll watch out.
Be, be careful. May I contain a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
May you have a motion made to adjourn, seconded, those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, folks. Great job.